I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone will take their seats. And we just have a little formality to go through first. Our elected town moderator, Randy Jordan, couldn't be here this evening. So Scott Davis, who is our assistant town moderator that Randy appoints yearly to help him at town meeting, is willing to step in. But it's a Mass General law formality that we have to take a quick vote on that. So I will...
Madam Clerk, I move to nominate Assistant Moderator Scott H. Davis as town moderator in Randy's absence for tonight's meeting.
Is there a second? Okay. Are there any other nominations? Not hearing any other nominations. I'll declare that Scott is named as the selectee for the evening. And I'll ask the chair to cast the single vote that's required, the sole vote, on the motion.
The chair votes in favor.
Okay. So we are...Scott Davis is elected. I declare that he is the moderator for the evening, and we will swear you in.
Thank you, Anita. Can everyone hear me? Everyone can hear me all right? Can you hear me now? I think we're good. All right.
Do you solemnly swear that you have failed and impartially performed your duties as moderator for our annual town meeting, assuming to the best of your abilities, so help us go?
I do.
Okay.
I'd like to welcome everybody here to the annual town meeting. Thank you all for coming. My name is Scott Davis. Our regular moderator, Mr. Randy Jordan, is out of town tonight. He's sorry. He really liked to be here, but he couldn't make it, and so we will go ahead without him. I'd like to ask Anita to read the warrant for tonight's meeting.
To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Elementary School Gymnasium, 65 Glenwood Road, Rutland, Mass., in said Rutland on Saturday, the 11th day of May, 2024, at 6:00 in the evening, then and there, to act on the following articles.
Thank you, Anita. I'd like to have everyone stand, and we'll do the pledge allegiance to the flag. The flag is on my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Please remain standing. Our national anthem, the Star Spangled Banner, will now be presented by nine-year-old Aria Monaco. Aria is in the third grade here at Glenwood Elementary School and lives here in Rutland. Aria?
Oh, say, can you see by the dandaly line What so proudly we hailed At the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's reg'ler, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Aria, that was absolutely beautiful. We appreciate it. Next, I'd like to call on Mr. Steve Angus, the president of the council of the First Congregational Church, to lead us in an invocation.
Could you please join me in a brief moment of prayer? God, Rutland is a very nice town, and we are truly blessed to be here in Rutland, and we're thankful for Rutland. We thank you not only for the town, but for all those who serve the town, as employees, as volunteers in so many ways, and as elected officials. Tonight, we face many important decisions. There are certainly many opinions. Please help us to listen with respect to others who have different opinions, even opinions we don't like. Please help us to make good decisions for the town and to accept the decisions of the majority. As individuals, we may not agree with every vote of the majority, but help us to respect each other and to live peacefully as citizens of the town of Rutland. Thank you again for this town. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Steve. I'd like to introduce the head tables to you. On my left, Anita Carlson, our town clerk. Next to Anita is Roger...
Smarj.
Roger Smarj. I'm sorry, having trouble with that. Our legal counsel this evening. Next to him, our town administrator, Austin Saganowitz. And then the members of the select board. I see Leah Whitman, Tom Galvin, Jen Ledger, Paul Mattson, and Harry Sekman. And on my right, the members of the finance committee, Darren Ross, Tom Rushala, Peter O'Malley, Karen Nowell, Linda Winica, and Ted Fassell. The chairman of the finance committee, Alex Mohaw, is not with us tonight. And then behind me is Mr. Ben Bereikin, who will be managing the technology of the voting tonight. Thank you, Ben. Also, I'd like to announce that Darren Ross will act as assistant moderator tonight in the case that I should have to step from this podium for any reason. We were scheduled to do a presentation of the Town Employee of the Year Award, and that will be delayed until Wednesday at the Public Safety Building. Is there a time for that, Austin?
1:00 P.M.
At 1:00 P.M. Wednesday, there will be a dedication for the Employee of the Year at the Public Safety Building. Leah, would you do the dedication, the town report, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Our town report, our annual dedication is to Becky Tuttle, our treasure collector. She worked for the town for the past decade, and she's been...she retired recently, moved to Florida. We miss her. We appreciate all of her work. And the annual town report is dedicated to her for her stewardship throughout the years. We have two very special memoriams this year. The first is to Mr. Kenneth J. Lowe, Jr. The town wishes to honor and remember the many contributions of Mr. Kenneth Lowe, Jr. Ken was a longtime resident of Rutland and was very active in the community during his years here in town. He served on the fire department for 25 years, retiring as a lieutenant in 1986. Following his retirement, he was a member of the fire brigade, where he helped to coordinate events and was an integral part of restoring the old fire station. He also served as selectman and member of the finance committee and was a parishioner at the First Congregational Church. Ken was an avid Red Sox fan, and he proudly served as an usher for the 23 years at Jet Blue Park in Fort Myers, Florida. In August 2021, he began working as an usher for the Woo Sox during their inaugural season. Ken is fondly remembered by his loved ones, friends, and peers in the community. We thank Ken for his years of service and stewardship to the town. Ken's family is here, and I will bring a book over to you, but we wanted to thank you for sharing Ken with us for all these years. Thank you so much. Our second in memoriam is to Mr. Ronald C. Marsh. The town wishes to honor and remember the many contributions of Mr. Ronald Marsh. Ron was raised in Rutland and began his community involvement as a young boy scout. He later went on to lead Boy Scout Troop 141 as their scoutmaster for 10 years while also serving on the troop committee. Ron was also a member of the Lions Club, taking pride in putting up the American flags in town for various holidays and parades. He was well-respected in the community and known for his generosity and kind spirit. Ron is fondly remembered by his loved ones, friends, and peers in the community. We thank Ron for his years of service and stewardship to the town. We also wish to thank his family for sharing Ron with him, with us, for so many years. I don't believe any family is here tonight. We have a book for them as well. Thank you all.
So let's get started. Let's start by testing our remotes. Everybody who is a town resident should have a remote, and I want you to know that Ben Bereikin spent most of yesterday putting new batteries in all of these. So we expect they're all going to work today. So we're going to go through a couple of questions, and we'll all get a chance to test them. For instance, my first question to you is, do you think tonight will be completed before 9:00 and be out of here by 9:00? Or do you think it's going to be a late evening? If you think we're going to be out by 9:00, please vote yes, which is a green button. If you think it's going to be a late night, go for the red one. I'm up to 131. Is that getting close to attendance? Have all voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you expect us to be out of here before 9:00. Let's hope we can do that. Is everybody comfortable with it? Let's do one more. Question two. You probably already know that the Rutland Events Committee is hosting a community fair next Sunday at the Community Center. If you plan to attend the community fair, please vote yes, the green button. If you are unable to be there that day, please vote no. I'm watching the numbers come in. Have all voted the wish? Then I declare the ballot closed. I'm happy to say that a good share of you will be at the events fair, but not the majority today. Is anybody uncomfortable with the remote at this point? Then let's move ahead. As we go through the articles, if you have something to say, if you want to discuss, or you have a question on any of the articles, I would ask you to come to the microphone in front of me, speak loudly. I'd like you to speak your name and your address, and then proceed with what you have Article one, to hear the annual reports of the town offices and committees or take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Article one as printed in the warrant.
I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion? Please signify your vote. If you're in favor, please vote the green. If not, please vote with the red. Have all voted the wish? Have all voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, 127 to four, you have voted in favor of that article. Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, in such sums as set forth below, in accordance with Chapter 41, Section 108 of the General Laws, as amended or take any action in relation thereto. I'm not going to read the chart that's below, but I'm sure you all can do that. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article two as printed in the warrant.
I have a motion, and I have a second. Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
The finance committee recommends favorably? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Then by your votes, please vote green, yes, if in favor; no, red, if you're not. Have all voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have affirmed the motion, 123 to seven. Thank you. We'll go on to Article four...Article three, excuse me, next one. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $11,490,780 or such other sums as may be necessary to defray the expenses of municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $11,490,780 to be expended by the town to fund the fiscal year 2025 municipal budget, all as set forth in the public meeting handout, page five, except for the education item, and meet the appropriation, $11,240,780 to be raised by taxation and $250,000 to be transferred from free cash.
Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Please vote with your remote, a yes, in favor; a no, against. Have all voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have voted 102 yeses, 20 noes. The motion passes. Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $790,635 to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as set forth below, or take any action in relation thereto. And you'll see there is a small chart after that motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $790,635 as printed in Article four of the warrant.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote with your remotes, please. Have all bailed the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have passed the motion, 117 yeses to 15 noes. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $16,555,122 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, as set forth below, or take any action in relation thereto. Please refer to the chart on your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,555,122 as printed in Article five of the warrant.
Recommendation of the finance committee, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Ah.
Sheri Haber, One Olivia Lane, and school committee representative. I'm here tonight asking that you support the Wachusett School District budget. Over the past year, I've seen a partnership grow between the school administration and town officials. I'd like to thank Select Board Chair Whitman, FinCom member Rushala, and Town Administrator Saganowitz for attending the workshop on state school funding. After that meeting and at the suggestion of Member Rushala, M.A.S.C. gave the town a specific presentation to our FinCom. I'd also like to thank Chair Whitman, FinCom member Winica, and Town Administrator Saganowitz for attending the budget roundtable, asking questions and discussing concerns. I was pleased to participate in FinCom's school discussion meeting as a member of the school committee. In addition, our town administrator, police, and fire chiefs meet regularly with the superintendent. It is clear that both the town and the district are working in partnership with an open dialogue. This is a level-service budget that has less of an increase than last year. That being said, I recognize that this is a large portion of our town budget. With the work of Michelle Grisay, our business director, the fiscal year 25 budget was carefully and accurately written. The salary line was calculated based on each individual staff member and our contractual obligations. Other lines are based on actual spending from this year and previous years. With Director Grisay's thorough approach to budgeting and clear explanations to the school committee, I can fully stand behind this budget. As with everything else, the school budget has been affected by inflation. The country has averaged 5.6% per year over the past three years, so of course, costs are going up. The administration has done what it can to limit budget increases, including negotiating union contracts that have just 2% cost of living increases in the first year and 2.25 the second year. The biggest budget increases this year are out-of-district special education costs, which we have no control over, and transportation costs, which of course are necessary. Looking forward, I ask that our voters and our town government advocate at the state level for a change of funding formula and to push for the funding of unfunded and underfunded state mandates to better support our schools and our town. Thank you to FinCom and the Board of Selectmen for supporting this article, recognizing that the district budget is one that the town can afford and is in the best interest of students. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Rachel Dolan, Weir Road. I'm just curious. Past history, we've always voted each individually, and now it's lumped into one. So if by chance it does fail, you've failed the minimum local contribution, which we have to pay. That's why we've always separated out. I'm just curious why that's changed this year.
Austin?
Happy to speak on that. Also, the council just wants to speak to general law. My understanding of general law, regional school district assessments, how they're proposed in town meeting, this candidly is really no different than presenting in four separate articles. If we do not pass any of the others, as was done previously, it's essentially still a no vote on the budget. So this is a slightly different presentation. However, all of the numbers are still transparently presented in the warrant.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion is before you. All those in favor, please vote with their remotes. Has everybody voted the wishes? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have passed the motion, 91 yeses to 41 noes. Article six, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $482,950 from free cash, water, and sewer enterprise fund retained earnings, and/or the capital stabilization fund in the amounts and for the purposes shown below for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, for capital equipment, buildings, facilities, and other projects, including, as applicable, site preparation, demolition, equipping of vehicles, and all other incidental and related expenses, or take any other action related thereto. And there is a chart of where the money is going to go. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article six as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee recommendation, please.
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the motion is before you. Have all voted the wish? The motion passes, 114 yeses, 19 noes. Thank you. Moving on to Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from receipts and revenues of the Water and Sewer Enterprise or from any other available funds the sum of $3,019,958 to operate the Water and Sewer Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums to the Water and Sewer Enterprise. Direct salaries, $711,333. Debt, $368,891, for a subtotal of the direct of $2,655,215. Indirect costs, $364,743, for a total line item number of $3,019,958, with the sum of $3,019,958 to be transferred from fiscal year 2025 receipts of the Water and Sewer Enterprise.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion, the recommendations? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Then please vote a yes favorably or a no unfavorably. Have all bailed the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have passed the motion, 104 yeses, 20 noes. Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from receipts and revenues of the Stormwater Enterprise or from any other available funds the sum of $305,775 to operate the Stormwater Utility for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums to operate the Stormwater Enterprise. Direct salaries, $65,000. Expenses, $200,775 for a subtotal for the direct of $265,775. Indirect costs, $40,000 for a total of Article eight of $305,775, with the sum of $305,775 to be transferred from the fiscal year 2025 receipts of the Stormwater Enterprise.
Second. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the article and the motion on Article eight? Is there any discussion? Yes.
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road. Question, Austin, I don't remember all the figures. Of the $40 that was just collected, what is the expected income from that compared to this $305,000?
The, so are you talking for the fiscal year 2024 budget?
Right, so we just got the $40 bill, then I guess maybe two parts. What does that cover?
Correct. Yeah.
How long?
Just a little history. So at the annual town meeting last year, the enterprise fund was established. The special town meeting in the fall actually funded it for a budget of approximately $114,000. The Select Board voted to establish a fee to meet that budget of $114,40 per parcel. This budget for fiscal year 25, the estimated fee will be about $85 per parcel.
And that will equal the 305, or is...
Correct.
Okay. So it's the $40, that $40 and the 85?
No, 85 for fiscal year 25.
Okay, so we've got to, just, so I know too, we got a bill that's due May 20th, and the next one is due...
The next bill will likely be sent out in January due February of next year.
And that will be...
$85.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand, but thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Al Hoffman, Seventeen Wheeler Road. Just wanted to warn the town that that's not the kind of taxation that the town should have. Regardless of what the state legislator has insisted upon, that's unconstitutional and it will be challenged in court. And it would be a shame for the town to have to spend money backing out of all the retributions that will come for that. It'll be a long process.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator, isn't this a federal regulation, not a state regulation?
The question is, is this a federal or a state regulation?
It's both. It's a permit that's issued by the federal government but co-managed by MASTEP. And just a quick note, the Stormwater Utility, there's approximately 30 municipalities in Massachusetts that have a Stormwater Utility, but over 2,000 nationally in the country that have a Stormwater Utility. So certainly not something new in terms of federal MS4 mandates across the country.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Joe Becker, Eighteen Crestview Drive. I think when this was, when the fund was established a year ago, this time before it was funded, I think part of the discussion was fines that would be levied against the town that hasn't accepted it. So did I hear correctly that we're one of 30 towns in Massachusetts? So is that to say that the other several hundred are being fined $25,000 a day?
No. There have been recent examples of communities nearby. City of Gardner was fined $60,000 for noncompliance with their MS4 permit. Enforcement is done through EPA and MASTEP. Some other communities choose other ways to fund their stormwater, whether it's through a revolving fund, whether through their general fund budgets. As you know, Town of Rutten for many years, especially their DPW, has had limited resources and was not able to keep up with the MS4 permit. So it really depends, Mr. Becker, on the community and how they're choosing to fund these obligations. This was something that this community decided to do.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? You've heard the motion? You've heard the warrant, and you've heard the discussion? Are you ready to vote? Have all balloted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have approved the article. The motion by 72 yeses and 59 noes. Moving on to Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from receipts and revenues of the PEG Access and Cable Fund or from any other available funds the sum of $160,000 to fund PEG Access and Cable-related operations for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate, to, excuse me, to approve Article nine as printed in the warrant with the sum of $160,000 to be transferred from fiscal year 2025 receipts of the PEG Access and Cable Fund.
Second. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? We'll open the vote. Yeses or nos, as you wish. Have all balloted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. You have voted in favor of the article by yeses, 96, nos, 34. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $37,893 from free cash to the town's capital stabilization fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Then we will move the article. Open the vote. Yeses are green, nos are red. Have all balloted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have approved the article, 110 yeses, 16 noes. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $37,893 from free cash to the town's OPEB Trust Fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Rochella. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Let's take a vote. Mr. Moderator. Oops. Oops. Oh. Yep. Okay.
Michelle Van Reet, Charona Killroad. I'm a little bit confused why we just put money in free cash to take it out of free cash.
Could you speak a little louder?
Sorry, Michelle Van Reet and Charona Killroad, I'm just confused as to why we just put money in free cash to take it out of free cash.
Would one of you guys like to take that one?
Uh, no. These articles have come out of free cash to go into separate funds. The Capital Stabilization Fund is a separate savings account the town has. The OPEB Trust is for benefits, retirees' benefits down the road. And the next article is for free cash to, excuse me, the first one was the Capital Stabilization Fund. That's a capital equipment fund. We just voted some money out of that. And the last one, the next article we're going to do is to the General Stabilization Fund. So it's free cash going into three different accounts.
And it's the same amount of free cash in each of these three articles, which may be just a little confusing.
Well, right, but that's part of the town's financial policy, is to try to add to these stabilization funds each year if we can, and that's what we voted to do.
Any other discussion?
Lou Conacurelli, Eighteen Blueberry Lane. I didn't read the whole financial page there. How much is each, is in each of these funds? I think it's a great idea, but how much is in each of these funds right now?
I don't have those numbers right in front of me, but maybe I...
That's okay, don't worry.
No.
That's all right.
She got them.
Are you all set, Mr. Conacurelli?
Well, I mean, I don't want to delay the meeting because we said get out of here by 9:00.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for that.
It would be good for the numbers to be set. I mean, if she's got them, let's hear them.
Wait a minute. Austin has the numbers. Let's listen to that.
Yeah, absolutely. Balance of the General Stabilization Fund as of April 18th is 1.2 million. Balance of April 18th of the Capital Stabilization Fund is 369,000. And the OPEB Trust Fund has approximately $600,000 in its balance now.
We're on Article 11 still. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? Have all balloted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have voted favorably, 106 yeses to 22 noes. Thank you. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $37,893 from free cash to the town's General Stabilization Fund or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Second. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? And we'll move to the vote? Sorry. Whoop.
The slide.
It's good.
It's good now. Excuse me? I was late.
I missed a word, did I, Roger?
No, Austin was a little late on the slide.
We can move the vote now, Austin? You're good. Yes, thank you. Go ahead and vote, please. Have all balloted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. Your yeses, 113, your nos, 14. The motion passes. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to enter into contracts for goods and services with duration in excess of three years pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30b, Section 12b, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on Article 13.
You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion?
Lou Conacurelli, Eighteen Blueberry Lane. Do we have to vote this annually or every semi-annual? We do? I don't remember doing that when I was a selectman, but anyway, are we anticipating any long-term contracts? No? With no project ahead of us where we'd have to enter into something down the road?
Not at this time. I think this is...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Just a customary article, as we go through procurement through 30b throughout the year, it may come into play where the Select Board has to enter into a contract longer.
Thank you. Just one other quick thing, Mr. Moderator. I want to shout out, this document right here is fantastic. I've been coming to town meetings since 1973. 1973. This is the best I've ever seen. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It makes it so much easier. We can actually stay home, we don't have to show up. Thank you.
Actually, that was a very nice comment, Louis. Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Are you ready to vote? Green is yes, red is no. Have everybody balloted the wish to? I declare the ballot closed. By your votes, you have passed the article, 117 to 13. Thank you. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or donations from state or federal governments or private agencies, individuals, or institutions, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? You've heard the motion? Has everybody balloted the wish? Still coming in? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have passed the article, 112 yeses, 8 noes. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds which become available from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways in the fiscal year 2025, Chapter 90 bond issue proceeds or other grant program funds to be used by the Department of Public Works for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with Massachusetts general laws, and further the town vote to raise said appropriation by borrowing and to authorize the town treasurer with approval of the Select Board to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, in anticipation of the receipt of said state aid, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee Recommendation, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Any discussion, please? Any discussion? Any discussion? We're ready to vote? Have all balloted the wish? Have all ballot had the wish? The motion passes favorably. 115 yeses to three noes. Please close the ballot. Thank you. Article 16, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53e 1/2, to establish fiscal year 2025 spending limits for certain of the revolving funds listed in Section 6 of the bylaw of the same name. All is set forth below, with such expenditure limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st in any year, to change the expenditure limit for the ensuing fiscal year, provided, however, that at the request of the entity authorized to expend such funds, the Select Board, with the approval of the Finance Committee, may increase such limit for that fiscal year only, or take any action in relation thereto. You note there's a small chart associated with this article. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the following sums to establish fiscal year 2025 spending limits for the following revolving funds. Animal control, $6,000. Board of Health, $60,000. Planning Board, $75,000. Recreation Department Activities, $260,000. Recreation Department School Year Activities, including Safe Place Program, $253,063. Zoning Board of Appeals, $5,000. Rutland Development and Industrial Commission, $5,000. And Earthworks Board, $1,000. Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. You've heard the motion, the article? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Let's proceed to vote. Green for yes, red for no. Have all ballot had the wish? I declare the ballot closed. A favorable vote, yeses are 112, noes are 16. Thank you very much. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 33, Section 59, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Let's proceed to vote. Have all ballot had the wish? I declare the ballot closed. The motion passes 114 to 6. Thank you. Article 17. Moving on to 18. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from valet funds, or borrow a sum of money to purchase and equip a new ladder fire truck, including all incidental and related expenses. And further, to determine whether the approval of any borrowing for this purpose shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion referendum under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21ck, or take any action thereto. Motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant, with the sum of $1,850,000 to be borrowed, and to authorize the town treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, to borrow said sum pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds and notes of the town, therefore, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be contingent upon passage of a Proposition 2 1/2 debt exclusion ballot question under General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21ck.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee, please?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article.
Thank you. You've heard the motion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Here comes the gentleman.
Yes, French Rett, 19 Prospect Street. I'd like to know how old the truck is? Why are they getting rid of it? Why do we need a ladder in this town in the first place? Is there any answers to any one of those questions? And what's wrong with the truck? I'm going to... I sit on the Capital Improvement Committee. I'm going to defer to Seth on this. But first, the truck is 25 years old.
I'm old too. Nobody got rid of me yet.
Yeah, well, you're in better shape than that then, I think.
Our fire chief is ready to try to explain this one, please. Seth? Let's come around behind you.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, through you, Seth by Fire Chief. I'm here tonight to present Article 18 and the question this evening, the age of the apparatus. It was approved on June 15th, 1998. It was Article 3 at a special town meeting. Mr. Knackioli was the moderator that evening. It passed that evening 200 to 4. I think the argument of why the town needs to have a ladder truck was made 25 years ago. As you know, everyone pays homeowners insurance. Your homeowners insurance is based on what fire protection is provided to the community. And you're giving a public protection classification number on a scale of 1 to 10. Currently, the town of Rowland has achieved an ISO class of 4. So we get point values for apparatus, training, personnel, our hydrants in the community. All these things accumulate to a score value. The ladder truck scores 3.24 out of the possible 4. If, in the event, the ladder truck goes out of service, it is not replaced, and we lose all 3.24 points, we will lose our ISO rating and go to a ISO class 5. That's how close we are teetering from a 4 to a 5. On your average homeowners insurance, that's a 7.5% increase in your homeowners insurance annually forever until we can approve that rating. So what we're asking tonight is to bond this amount of money over a set period of time. We anticipate the average homeowner, if approved Monday at the ballot, would approximately be $55 annually and decrease every year going forward. If we lose ISO rating and your homeowners insurance goes up 7 1/2%, your homeowners insurance policy would see an increase of $75 or greater based on the value of your home. So why are we getting rid of the vehicle? It's 25 years old. In the last 18 months, it's been out of service 147 days, and it's been averaging $30,000 a year in repairs. It's been eating up 85% of our maintenance budget, and we just cannot continue to sustain that. It's a safety issue, and we're just asking this evening for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any other discussion?
Al Hoffman, 17 Wheeler Road. You notice in the article that it refers to Proposition 2 1/2. Well, there's a reason we passed Proposition 2 1/2, because of outlandish spending by towns throughout the state. And we cut things back quite a bit. We reduced your excise tax on a new car from 6% to 2 1/2%. Yeah, you're welcome. And now we have people who want to always have exclusions from that, which we shouldn't have allowed to have in the first place, and spend money that the town doesn't have. Well, you know, it's time for the town to do the things that the average citizen does. You don't have the money for it, so you cut back and you do with less. So I think the town needs to go along with the fire department it has and plan for the future for getting a new equipment. But does it have to be a $100-plus type of equipment? It doesn't cost that much for a normal two-seat helicopter. So I think it's an example of outlandish spending where they're just trying to get around the good deal that we did with Proposition 2 1/2 to save the taxpayers from the attack by other people who just want what they want, and they want everybody to pay for it. And it's an excuse of saying that it's a safety thing. Well, we all have our own safety things, and it's time for everybody to stand up and say enough is enough. This is not legitimate. We shouldn't pass this. Thank you.
Lou Carnicoli, I respect the gentleman's position, but quickly, 2 1/2 was not passed to come after towns like Rutland because we were physically responsible. Barbara Anderson wanted to put the cap on the state. She couldn't get it done. Well, I'm answering your position. She couldn't get it done, okay? So now they came after the towns. We were always fiscally responsible because the Select Board had to prove to the town meeting people like we're having tonight whether the budget should go up 3%, 4%, 5%. This cap is disastrous. And what the chief said, if we fail safety issues, then our home insurance is going to go up, and you're going to be paying more money, and I'm going to be paying more money than we would be paying for the fire truck. So I would urge you to pass this tonight, and I would urge you to get out on Monday and get the override, which is... And I would urge you to talk to your state senators and rep and get rid of 2 1/2, or at least have it for the big cities and leave us alone. We're fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Well, we've heard the hogwash that's been going on for years. But we need to, as any town, be fiscally responsible. And if you can't have something brand new and updated, you plan ahead so that you can do the next best thing and work towards getting that. And all the issue about, oh, it's a safety thing, and your taxes will go up, or your house is in danger, is just more of the same excuse that the people who want to take from everybody to pay for what they want, whether it's town water or whatever. And I think it's time that we stood firm on Proposition 2 1/2 and not pass overrides. And this is for every town. It's not that the towns in the eastern part are taking advantage of the towns in the western part. They do that anyway in the legislature. And the only way to fight that is to stand up against excessive taxation by this state. Look at what happened last time that there was a Proposition 2 1/2 override. Fact is, the town shouldn't be able to even borrow money ahead of time on pie-in-the-sky things. They should have to save ahead for it. And every town citizen should vote against this and all other Proposition 2 1/2 overrides. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Harry Steckman, Select Board, and I also sit on the CIP, Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Just as a note of fact, this has been before the committee for several years, and we've deferred buying it for the simple reason the town was not in a good position for borrowing the money. Unfortunately, we've come to the life of this truck, and the possibility of getting another truck soon looks like it doesn't exist. The possibility that it could take anywhere from 2 to 5 years to get this truck built is more likely possibility. So we are... We have... The committee has voted to put this on the warrant tonight in anticipation of not spending the money today, but having it available in 2 to 5 years when that truck will become available to us. We all know about the supply chain and everything else out there. So if we didn't do it today and allocate the money so we could apply for a potential federal grant, we could be looking at $2 million plus for a fire truck in the next couple of years. So that is why we put it on the warrant tonight. Thank you.
Yes?
Just a quick note to add. The gentleman's comment about fiscally conservative in planning, I refer to page 7 of your informational packet. There's a line for excluded debt. The estimated delivery date for this truck, I believe, as Mr. Steckman mentioned, is approximately 2 years. In 2 years, we will have zero excluded debt service. Our current year plan for fiscal year debt service is $338,000. The estimated debt service for this ladder fire truck is $250,000. So we'll actually be borrowing less than we're borrowing now for excluded debt.
You would? Oh, you can be next if you'd like to speak. Darren Ross, 5 Rufus Pondham Lane. I find it insulting in the town of Rowland that being on the fire department for 40 years, police, fire, highway department, been taking a beating for most of the 40 years I've been on there. I've never seen this gentleman at the fire station at 3 o'clock in the morning when I'm out saving everybody or doing the things we do. I'm... $1.8 million is a lot of money, but our taxes are going to go up. We need the truck. We... I'm not on the fire department anymore. I'm retired from the fire department. God bless him. But it's been down 150 days last year. If it's coming to your house to save your kids or somebody in your family, it's not going to do it. We're just... Please, there's no hogwash here. Well, come on up to the fire station sometime, take a tour. They'd love to see you. Thank you very much. Please support this article.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Yes. People need to notice that in town government, just like in state government, just like in the federal government, it grows on itself. And it gets bigger all the time. And there may be some good things that happen and some bad things happen always too. But people are actually making a big mistake if they think you solve the problems by having the government go beyond its legitimate means. You've got to act like individual citizens, and you have to cut back when you have to cut back and plan ahead. And we need to insist that the town government do that too. And we had a whole bunch of things that I spent a lot of money on, hardly any opposition to them. A lot of them could be cut back. But we have a Finance Committee that votes to approve everything. And the average person in town looks at the report, and if the Finance Committee approves it, oh, they've done the studying and all. But, you know, we have to stand up as individual citizens, and we have to push for what's correct. And we have to do that at local, state, and federal levels. And if you just look at the disastrous things that are happening in any one of the three, and just pick on one, like the federal level, you can see that we're headed for a disaster if we don't turn things around and get back to solid constitutional approach and economic reality. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, one more thing. Darren Ross, now I'm back on the Finance Committee. Now you're insulting us over here. Anytime you want to come to a Finance Committee meeting, they're posted in the town website. We'd love for you to come up. And every article that we spend money on, we spend a lot of hours debating this. We pay taxes as well. Enough with the insults. I'd more to move the article.
Did you move the article?
I did.
The article has been moved. Is there a second to that?
Oh, no.
Who gave me the second? Your name? The article has been moved. We will proceed to vote at this time. Sorry, Mrs. P. We're voting on the article as printed.
So if they don't move the article, then I get to speak, right?
So if they don't move the article, then I get to speak, right?
If this, we're voting right now to move the article. That is a vote.
Okay.
We do that before we talk to you, okay?
Yeah, okay. So if you don't move the article, I get to speak.
Be quiet, Corrine.
Okay.
All those in favor of moving the article at this time, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Has, have all voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. Roger, what does that mean? 90 to 40. Looks like you've got the two-thirds there, Mr. Moderator. We have the two-thirds? Yes. The motion passed. It was close. I needed Roger to do the math for me. So we're on the original article, the motion that I believe it was Mr. Sekman made. All those in favor of the motion as made by Mr. Sekman, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. Ben is not quite ready.
It's not open yet.
We've got a little technical problem. Hang on, folks.
He had to make an adjustment based on the move, the question, so it just takes a few minutes.
Ah, we're open to vote. Please vote yes for the motion or no for the motion as you wish. And this is also a two-thirds vote, incidentally. Has anybody voted the wish? I declare the ballot closed. Roger, I believe that's a pass. The motion has passed. 100 yeses, 32 noes. Thank you all. Moving on, Article 19. To see if the town will vote to accept as a gift from the Rutland Volunteer Fire Brigade, the purchase of personal emergency escape ropes and related attachments for use for the fire department or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town accept as a gift from the Rutland Volunteer Fire Brigade, the purchase of personal emergency escape ropes and related attachments for use by the fire department.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator, recommendation to the finance committee?
Yeah. Recommendation from the finance committee?
The finance committee recommends favorable on this article.
I, I, who we ask the fire chief to just give us a quick.
Fire Chief, Mr. Knight, would you explain what this is?
Mr. Moderator, through you, Fire Chief Seth Knight, this was a donation gifted by the Rutland Fire Brigade in the amount of $7,000. It was to equip rescue bailout devices that are warned by the firefighters in the event they have to bail out of a second or third-floor window that they'd be able to rappel down in an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Is there any discussion? We're ready to vote? Are we ready to vote, Ben?
Yep.
Please proceed with the vote. Yeses are green, noes are red. Has everybody bailed into wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your ballot, you have passed the motion 128 to 5. Thank you. Article 20. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $4,758. Excuse me, that's 4,007.58 cents from free cash, such amount representing the town's fiscal year 2023 receipts for the Massachusetts statewide opioid settlement agreement, to the statewide opioid settlement revenue account pursuant to Section 197 of Chapter 77 of the Acts of 2023, and further to provide that all other receipts from the Massachusetts statewide opioid settlement agreement be credited to such special revenue account or take any action in relation thereto. Motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Pat Latino Martin on Sunnyside Ave. What is the opioid agreement?
Would anybody answer Pat's question, please?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, Rogers Marriage Town Council. So the opioid settlement agreement was something that the state attorney general entered into in 2022 with various pharmacies and pharmaceutical companies to recover money for the state related to the opioid crisis. 60% of that money stayed with the state. 40% of that money is being sent down from the state to the towns and cities of the Commonwealth. At the time that those monies started funding to the cities and towns last year, the state legislature had not set a law as to how that money should be accounted for. So towns were putting it just into the general fund, which it was then closed out as free cash. In December of 2023, the state legislature passed this law that allows it to be put into a special revenue fund, which is just an accounting mechanism that keeps the money separate from the general fund so that it can be tracked and used for the purposes that the settlement agreement contemplates, such as prevention and recovery and things like that.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor, please vote by your remotes. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare it closed. You have passed the motion 116 to 9. Thank you. Article 21. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $540 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of six six-foot folding tables for use at community hall during early voting and at polling locations, including all other incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto. Do I hear a motion?
I move that the town vote to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Is the senior center, Pat Latino Martin, Sunnyside Ave, is the community hall actually the senior center? It used to be the basement of the town hall. I don't know what it is now.
Does anybody want to answer Pat's question?
It's still the town hall. So the name of town hall is still technically community hall.
Any other discussion? Yes. And what is it, sir?
My history recommends favorable action.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? You've heard the motion. Please proceed to vote. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare it closed. The motion passes 109 to 13. Article 22. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $12,247.32 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of 12 four-station voting booths, including all other incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action.
And is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's proceed to vote. The vote is open. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have passed the motion 105 to 14. Thank you. I think that gets us down to Article, what's on my paperwork here? 23, 24. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1,551 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of six binders with slip covers and protective archival sleeves for preservation of vital records, including all other incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 23 as printed in the warrant.
Second. I heard a second? Second. Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action.
You've heard the motion, the recommendation, the finance committee. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's proceed to vote. The vote is open. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have passed the motion 105 to 14. Thank you. I think that gets us down to Article, what's on my paperwork here? 23, 24. Article 24. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $5,025 from free cash for the purchase and equipping of three poll pads for voter check-in and three printers, including all other incidental and related expenses or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 24 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action.
You've heard the motion and the recommendation on Article 24. Please proceed. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Please proceed to vote. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare the ballot closed. By your vote, you have passed the article 104 to 15. Article 25. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $1,207.62 from free cash for the purpose of paying bills of a prior fiscal year as follows. And the grid down there, National Grid, Crystal Rock, and Custom Truck One sources.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 25 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action.
You've heard the motion and the recommendation on Article 25. Any discussion? Any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let us proceed to vote. The vote is open. Have all bailed into the wish? I declare the ballot closed. You have passed the article 113, fair rule to 13 opposed. Thank you. Article 26. To see if the town will vote to amend the following articles in the town of Rutland zoning bylaws to read as follows. Article 3, Section 8.B.5.L. The use of a major home occupation shall be limited from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday and 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays unless otherwise determined by the board. Article 3, Section 10B. For new construction, the building inspector shall not issue an occupancy permit until an as-built plan has been received certified by a registered professional engineer that the work has been completed in accordance with the approved site plan. And Article 9, Section 64.A. The zoning board of appeals for this zoning bylaw shall be the zoning board of appeals provided for by the provisions of the Massachusetts State Building Code as appointed by the Select Board or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Finance committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable action on Article 26.
Is there a planning board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the planning board recommends favorable action on Article 26.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road. Just a question. Reading number one, it seems like if we pass this, then really we aren't passing anything except unless otherwise determined by the board. Is that?
Norman, would you?
If we pass, if we pass this.
Here comes your answer, I think.
Okay.
Would you, would you please introduce yourself? Not everybody knows you.
John Charbonneau, town planner. When I was first hired, I worked with the town clerk to incorporate changes that were voted at previous town meetings over the last couple of years into the zoning bylaws. Anita, it came to her attention that some language did not end up in the zoning bylaws exactly as it should have been. This is simply a housekeeping article to make sure the language that's in the zoning bylaws reflects exactly what was passed previously.
Okay, so we, we were only adding that Monday through Saturday, Monday through Saturday, unless, unless determined by the board, otherwise.
That was, that was already passed and approved.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Shelley Henry, Johna Kill Road. The first two make sense. The second one, the current language building bylaws of the town of Rutland versus Massachusetts state building. Is there any difference between the two?
Here comes our answer.
John Charbonneau, town planner. The building department goes by the Mass Building Code. No town has their own local building code. That's why this is being changed.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? I think we're ready for the vote. This will be a two-thirds majority vote. The vote is open. Has everybody voted the wish? I declare the vote closed, and it's very easy to see it's well over two-thirds. 117 yeses. 117 yeses and 6 noes, the vote carries. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to accept Sections 3 through 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the General Laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, to determine the amount of such surcharge on real property as a percentage of the annual real estate tax levy against real property in the fiscal year in which such surcharge shall commence, to determine whether the town will accept any of the exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act, or take any other action related thereto. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 27 as printed in the warrant, with the surcharge to be set at 3% pursuant to MGL Chapter 44B, Section 3B, and to commence in fiscal year 2026, provided that the town adopt the exemptions from the surcharge pursuant to MGL Chapter 44B, Section 3E, for property owned and occupied as a domicile by a person who would qualify for low-income housing or low- or moderate-income senior housing in the city or town, and for $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential real property, with such surcharge to be effective July 1, 2025.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee approval? Before we proceed to discussion, I'm going to ask for a brief presentation. The presenter today is Jen Ledger. Are you ready to proceed?
As soon as Austin gives me the okay. All right, thank you, everyone. I'll try and go through this relatively quickly. You do have a handout. Sorry, can everybody hear me okay? All right. You do have a handout that goes over quite a bit that's here, but I'll go through this as quickly as possible. But just wanted to provide you with some information on what the Community Preservation Act is and what it can do for our community. So what is the Community Preservation Act? It is a fund that will allow communities to... Well, it will allow us to establish a fund that is dedicated to funding projects specific to historic preservation, open space, recreation, and affordable housing. Those are the four categories that we're able to spend these funds on. So the big question is, where does the money come from? So there's two places that money comes from. The funds are collected as determined by the town, a 1% to 3% annual surcharge on your local property taxes. And for the town, tonight, we are suggesting for your consideration a 3% surcharge, which averages about $145 annually, per average Rutland residential assessment. And we're considering the following exemptions. For the first $100,000 of assessed property value for residential and commercial properties, for qualified ownership of Rutland's low-income housing, as well as low-income and moderate-income senior housing. And any taxpayer that's already receiving a regular property tax abatement or exemption under MGL Chapter 59 would receive a prorated reduction in that surcharge as well. The other side of the funds from this, in addition to the local surcharge, is state funds. So that would... Excuse me. The state provides matching distributions each year at variable rates that are distributed from the Community Preservation Trust Fund at the state level. So we are suggesting 3%. Why are we doing that, instead of a lower percentage rate, 1% or 2%? So the way that the state distributes their funds, there's up to three rounds of distribution for matching state funds. Every participating community, that is a CPA community, receives a contribution from round one. But only communities that are at a 3% surcharge rate are eligible for funds for distributions from rounds two and three. So being a 3% community would essentially maximize our potential to get up to 100% matching state funds for what we contribute at the local level. So just to give you a quick example of what some of those numbers would look like and how this surcharge is calculated, on the left you have a grid that gives you... We're going to use fiscal year 2024 tax rate and the average residential assessment, which for 2024 was $427,000. At the $14.83 per thousand tax rate, the average tax bill would be about $6,332. If we factor in CPA, we take that $100,000 exemption that we are recommending, and that would be taken off of your assessed value, which would bring us to $327,000 for this example, line E. So you would take your tax rate, your $14.83, and take that against that $327,000 value, which would bring your property tax for this purpose to about $4,849. And at that 3% surcharge rate, your surcharge that would be added to your tax would be about $145, bringing your total bill to $6,477. Again, these are the average rates using the average assessed value for properties in Rutland. So as far as how much money would be collected, again, doing some estimates here. For fiscal year 2023, I believe these numbers are that we are using, the local surcharge that we would be raising would have been about $469,000. At a state match, and just caveat here, this is a very conservative 30% state match, would be about $140,000, so giving us that $610,000. And then allowing for those exemptions, about $105,000, which again is pretty conservative, would bring us to about $505,000 raised on an annual basis. So again, just noting here that 30% state match is pretty conservative. So if we were a 3% community, we would expect that match to be significantly higher, to hopefully the 85 to 100% match. So just some other numbers of some other local CPA communities. The top two that we have here, Phillipston and Templeton, are 3% CPA communities. So just to give you an idea of what they're receiving as far as state-matched contributions. So just in 2023 alone, you can see Templeton raised 270... Or was received $277,000 from the state, which was 100% matched. And then over the last 10 years, they've gotten $1.6 million in funds, just from the state alone. And that's added into their local surcharge as well. So you can see the other communities, West Boylston, Hubbardston, Lancaster, all have 2%, 1.5%, 1%. They do receive state match, but you can see the percentage is a little bit lower. So it is a tax. We cannot... We are asking you to contribute to this fund. But there's a lot that goes with this, and what we can do with it, and why it's different. So a couple of the reasons here being that what we have here, we get state contribution in addition to what you contribute and what you're willing to put in. We can get up to 100% matching state funds. So that's not something that we would get if we were trying to raise these funds or use these funds via the general fund. Anything that is expended out of this fund, you as the resident decide how it gets spent and what it gets spent on. And we can use this for matching funds that are required by a lot of state and federal grants. We have to put in money in order to get to those grants, so this allows us those opportunities. The funds that we have for this are dedicated to projects that historically in this town have been severely underfunded or unfunded. We just have not had the funds to actually pursue any of these. And it's going to facilitate knowledge and participation with you as the residents on what you want to see happen in this town, what you want to see worked on, and what you would like to see this money go to. So just a quick timeline of what we would be looking at to adopt CPA. We have, of course, tonight, the town meeting vote, which is to place CPA on the ballot for the November 5th presidential election. And if this article passes tonight, we would form that ballot question, which would require Secretary of State approval. And then the ballot vote would take place, presidential election, which is Tuesday, November 5th. If it passes that ballot vote in November, then the bylaw committee will draft a Community Preservation Act bylaw. And the bylaw will contain... Will include how the CPA committee will be formed, who would be a part of that committee, how many members, how that would be either elected, appointed, all up to what the bylaw stipulates. And then the bylaw would, of course, be discussed and accepted at a future town meeting, either annual in May 2025 or the fall 2025, depending on the timing. And then if that... Once that goes through, the Committee Preservation Committee would be formed, and we would be able to start work. So just talking about how the CPA funds would be managed and dispersed. Of course, the CPA committee is formed, and that committee, their charge is really to study and research the needs, possibilities, resources of the town regarding community preservation. They're going to consult with any existing municipal boards, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, the Planning Board, to get their thoughts. They're going to hold one or more public informational hearings so that you as the resident can participate and provide your feedback as to what you would like to see done, what projects you would like to see reviewed. And then once they review all those projects, they're going to make recommendations to you, the legislative body at town meeting, for how to expend those funds, on what projects we want to see that money spent on. So as far as what we can spend it on, like I said, we have these four categories. And annually, a minimum of 10% of the collected funds needs to be allocated or spent in the three primary categories. So historic preservation, open space and recreation, and affordable housing. 10% annually has to be either spent or allocated towards those purposes. If it were desired, 5% can be allocated for administrative and operating expenses associated with the Community Preservation Committee. And then we have the flexibility to determine wherever we want to spend the remaining 65% to 70%. It can go to any one of those three categories. But really, what we want to drive home is that it's you as the residents are the ones that are contributing to this fund. You're the ones that want to see projects and change in this community, and you have the approval. You are the ones that decide what projects and how much money and what we want to see happen with this fund. So just to go quickly through a couple of the categories. These are some completed projects that potentially could have qualified for use of CPA funds. We just approved an article tonight. There is a piece where we're looking to replace the Glenwood Elementary Playground, the ADA service, that was approved tonight. Again, that's money that is coming out of the Capital Stabilization Fund that could have been applicable for CPA funds. We have some capital improvements for the town pool, a couple of $22,000, $35,000, $2,500. These are all items that could have potentially come out of the CPA fund. And then back in 2019, a $500 allocation for the Open Space Preservation Fund, something else that we could have allocated from the CPA funds. And just a couple of areas of, you know, thinking towards the future, where we could spend some of this on open space and recreation. We can use it to purchase land for open space, or any land that we would like to use for a recreational facility. Oh, sorry, everybody, the projector died. So just going through these. We can create an outdoor recreational complex. So, you know, we have anything that we would like to include. We can include ballparks. We have skate park, pickleball. We could... Any of the existing fields, baseball, softball, soccer, we could rehabilitate those. The town pool rehabilitation. We can replace aging and hazardous playground equipment. We can create an outdoor pavilion at the community center or at Memorial Field. And we could rehabilitate the fitness trail at Memorial Field. Those are all potential projects. With regards to historic preservation, again, we have an item that was approved tonight, as well as a past article as well, for preservation of vital town records. Those are things that could come out of CPA funds. We had a past article for $50,000 for Woodhouse Capital Improvements. So the rehabilitation of our historic buildings in town, again, all applicable for CPA. And we had a $9,700 allocation for installation of sanitary sewer and water service at the old fire station, something that could have been CPA applicable. For future projects, things that we could do, again, thinking for the historic preservation side, Woodhouse Wood Studio. We could do the rehabilitation there, and that would include ADA accommodations. Same thing for our town hall. We can do the rehabilitation there and ADA accommodations. Historic cemetery preservation. Preservation of Rutland's historical documents and artifacts. And then at the old fire station, we can do ADA accommodations there, as well as working to pave the driveway, which needs to be done when we did all the work at the cemetery there. And the last piece is the affordable housing piece. So we, right now, Rutland is only at 3% of our state-mandated 10% of affordable housing requirement, and CPA would allow us to help meet that requirement. We can create fund support programs that would provide grants, loans, rental assistance directly to individuals or families that would be eligible for community housing. We could hire a housing coordinator that would... That could assist the town with a plan to create that affordable community housing that fits into the character and expectations of this town. Sorry. Oh, it's going back. And we can even use it to actually develop and build affordable housing units as well. Okay. Yep. So that's just, again, giving you a brief overview. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Jen. You've heard the motion and you've heard the presentation. Is there any discussion? Please line up. I see a whole bunch of hands.
Lucille Bailey, Sunnyside Ave.
Name and address, please.
Lucille Bailey, A, Sunnyside.
Thank you.
I have a question about recreation. I've worked several years over at the Safe Place after school. In Naquaw School, they've had that little playground. And we got turned down when the inspector came several years ago. And it's still a mess over there. There's a slide, and the Safe Place cannot use that place. Are they ever going to fix that? It's just...
Are you referring to the one that's out front at Naquaw?
Yes.
That one actually no longer exists. It's been dismantled.
So they're just going to leave it there like that?
It will stay like that until there's funding to be able to replace the equipment.
Oh, that's sad. Unfortunately. I'm sorry.
Nancy Sekman, 13 Beechwood Drive. I just want some clarification. So Jen, I thought I heard you say that at 3%, that they would match us 100%. Did you say that?
Up to. It's variable every year, based on how the state does and where the fund is at.
Okay, so when the slide came up for Templeton, I think they only got 30%. So I just want to clarify, like you just said, so this... It could be up to 100. No guarantee it'd be up to 100.
For fiscal year 2023, Templeton at 3% did get 100% matching state funds.
So I didn't see 30%.
The 2% and the 1.5% and 1%, the other three communities that were below only received about a 38% match.
Okay, but should the state not have the funds for it, we would get nothing, right? I guess I'm just looking for the town to... For the townspeople to be aware. I mean, this is great. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much. It explained so much. But that because I have heard that the state can... At some point, you could not get anything, that that is a possibility. We would have our money that we put into it, but how much we would get each year could vary.
So, if I may, you're correct that every year it could vary, depending on...
So, if I may, you're correct that every year it could vary, depending on what happens with the state trust fund. Right now, the Community Preservation Act at the state level, the trust fund, is funded by a surcharge all of us are paying when we do business at the Registry of Deeds. So anytime you go to the Registry of Deeds, you're automatically paying a surcharge that goes into the State Community Preservation Act Trust Fund. That money is invested every year, and the investments are the paid-out dividends. So depending on how the investments do, as well as how much surcharges are collected on a year-to-year basis, and how much business the Registry of Deeds is doing, is how much funding the state can then allocate out to the communities. So we've all been paying into this every time we've gone to the Registry of Deeds for the past 20 years. We haven't recouped any of that money because we aren't a Community Preservation Act community. So you're correct that it does vary year to year. By going for the 3%, it puts us in additional rounds. So the state kind of says, depending on how much they've collected from the Registry of Deeds, as well as how well the trust fund has done that year, this is what we're going to give every community that's a CPA community, a blanket amount, 20 to 35% generally. And then for 3% communities, they are then offered additional rounds for additional funding that can bump it up, you know, anywhere between an extra 15% to, percent up to almost reaching towards 100%.
Okay, this is great. My next, my next question is, so on the ballot, it's going to, is it going to say that you are requesting 3%? And if it does, does that mean that then this, we have to come again before the town and say, all right, we'll try for 2%? Is that how it's going to work? Do you know what I'm saying? Like, how is it going to be written on the warrant as for 3% that you're looking for?
So, based on what is passed at town meeting tonight, is what would be drafted for the ballot question in the fall. So it wouldn't, the, the town would take what's crafted tonight, what passes tonight, and use that to create language for the ballot question in November.
Okay.
Is that clear? Kind of?
Kind of. Well, just because, like, do you know what I'm getting at? Like, what if this town says, no, we don't want 3%? How will you know if maybe 1% or 2% could pass, is what I'm getting at? That's all. Thank you.
Roger.
Mr. Moderator, through you, at least with respect to the ballot question, the state CPA, the state act sets forth the precise language of the ballot question, and it's a pretty simple one. It would read, shall this town, Rutland, accept sections 3 to 7 inclusive of chapter 44B of the general laws as approved by its legislative body, town meeting here tonight, a summary of which appears below, and then the summary that the presenter referenced that has been approved by the state Secretary of the Commonwealth would then follow. So that's, it would be a very simple ballot question with respect to your question about the surcharge amount. Tonight is when the town meeting decides whether to do the 3% or do some other amount.
Next.
Carol Benoit, Turkey Hill Road. I'm not opposed to the ideology of CPA, just want to say that. But regarding open space, recreation, the historic preservation, those buckets, I would like to put an alternative out, that it be a voluntary. I've lived in towns and cities that, on your tax bill, there's line items for voluntary contribution to your taxes. So you pay your tax, and then you, like, do you want to pay a dollar for this presidential thing, something like that? And it could be a voluntary add-on to your taxes. Regarding the affordable housing mechanism, I would ask if there's, if there's a way to require that new subdivisions include a percentage, perhaps 8 to 10% of the houses that they build, become affordable housing. That way, Rutland would own the rights to this affordable housing as far as being able to do a lottery for low to moderate income housing families, and maybe also include first responders, which this will not. So I had heard that first responders are priced out of the market in Rutland. This would allow first responders that live, could live in Rutland. And I'd also read an article about Massachusetts getting their hands on this. Let me quote, "While Beacon Hill searches for solutions to the serious housing shortage that fuels affordability concerns in Massachusetts, a real estate industry organization wants to see the Community Preservation Act program retrofitted to put a greater emphasis on housing production. The Greater Boston Real Estate Board partnered with the Center for State Policy Analysis at Tufts University to complete a thorough assessment of the CPA program with a particular focus on affordable housing." So the state's going to change this program if the current administration has anything to say about it. And I also do want to point out that the 100% off the top that gets taken off and the exemption for low to moderate income people, households, that is up to this legislative body. We can vote that out, so it would be 100%. So that's a clear, I read that in Massiel today.
Okay. Next, sir.
Moderator, through you, one, one thing on the comments that were just offered.
Yes.
The town meeting tonight is deciding whether to adopt the state act. Can you hear me now? Okay, that's better. Town meeting tonight is deciding whether to adopt the State Community Preservation Act and cannot make any of the buckets voluntary thereunder. I just wanted to make that clear.
Mike Ferikis, 5 Stevens Way. First of all, great presentation on CPA. When I first heard about it, I was a little bit like another tax, being a senior citizen and getting taxed enough. But then, once I got into it, realized it's not really. I realized, and I've done a lot of homework on this, and realized it's been going on for like 20 years, and I looked at a lot more communities. I don't know why Rutland has waited this long to pass this. This is a necessity. I'm not a big person on overrides. I favor two and a half, but things are tough. Budgets are tough. This is a way to get a lot more funding through the CPA, which is going to benefit the town for many issues. And it's the people of the Rutland that decide what we're going to do with that money. And going to 3% as the best route, because it's three payments a year, up to 100%, we need this now. And I hope this moves forward from tonight and gets into November, and we go from there. Thank you very much.
Karine Puliafico, Sunnyside Ave. First of all, I'd like to ask how the, I couldn't hear how the Finance Committee voted on this as far as favorable or not.
They recommend favorable.
Okay. And to what I wanted to say before, I go along with the Finance Committee because they've done a whole lot more studies on, and every one of these articles than probably anybody in this whole room. And if they come up with a favorable recommendation, I know they're working for the best interest of the town. And I also, I wanted to, in order for me to wrap my head around this, I wanted to just say that the tax is like a checking account, no interest or anything. This is more like a savings account, where we're getting something for our money. So it kind of makes sense to go along with this, this article. Thank you.
I think it's kind of unfair to spring a lesson in Bidenomics on the town meeting at the last minute. This is something that should have been publicized beforehand. However, we really don't need that. This is just a, well, they call it a voluntary tax, but it really isn't that. If you look at your Massachusetts state income tax, you have a choice. You can pay the regular income tax rate of about 5%. Or you can select to pay 8%. How many people do you know are paying 8% on their income tax by choice? This is just another masked deal to confuse people. It looks like a lot of work went into it to do things, but I don't think you'll find too many towns have been fooled into voting for this. Some of the ones on Cape Cod started out early when they had this and voted it, and now people are having a hard time getting rid of it. This is just a bad idea. It isn't anything that's going to promote preservation. Just look around the town, and you'll see it's turning from being like Rutland into being like Shrewsbury or Holden. There's not going to be any preservation of the nature or anything of that. It's just a phony voluntary additional tax that you pay, and then the people who run the show to their own liking figure out how they're going to spend it to get more votes. It's totally ridiculous, and it shouldn't be sprung on people to judge at this point because they don't have the time to really study it. It's a very bad idea. And it's, I don't know if you looked at these slides, but it's another one of those presentations by a pressure group that's presenting these to people throughout the state and maybe even in many other states. And somehow, people are going to be foolish enough to vote for this. Bad idea. I hope you vote it down.
Natalie Borison, Brunel Drive, also Ag Commission. I was part of the group that started to look into this and proposed it to the board. The entire purpose of this piece of legislation is to promote open space, recreation, low-income housing, and the whole purpose is that it cannot go to, no offense, you guys, you guys don't, really, it's the town that gets the say in it, which is fabulous, because I've heard so much about the farms that have been sold to developers, or the playgrounds that fall into disrepair, the open space where the paths are just disastrous, like the one in Brunel Farms, it doesn't exist anymore. This can help all of those things, and the town gets the final decision. Everything that goes before the CPA board, or the CPA, yeah, CPA, the CPA Commission, the CPC, has to then be approved at town meeting, which means that everything is transparent. Everything that gets spent gets approved by the town itself and everyone in this room. It's not a secret fund. And I've heard so many times at town meetings, especially about wishing that we could get more grants for the town. The CPA standing of the town is one of the first things that is looked at for a lot of the grant proposals that we would be able to look into. There are many, many, many grants that the town is not even eligible for unless we are a CPA town. So it will help us not only getting that match rate, which is going to be very, very high for this town based on our rating by the state, but also we'll be able to get grants, which means that these projects that cost $150,000 off the bat could end up costing the town as little as $30,000 because of what we will get in bonuses from the CPA. So I think it could be really, really beneficial and get exactly what we've been asking for.
Sheila Dead, 209 Palm Gussett Road. I'm so thrilled that the town is finally pursuing this. It is a pet peeve of mine that we have spent, at this point, 20 years, and we've done it with other projects as well, where we walk away from available money out of fear mongering. In this case, we basically walked away from the state, saying, if you're just willing to save a little bit, we'll give you more. And of course, as was noted by the chair, we already are paying into this, which means other communities have been taking advantage of it. I want to highly encourage people to go to the state website, which has really good data on where the money has been going and how much money has been going. There's also another website that's just communitypreservation.org, and it literally lists every single project that has been funded in the state of Massachusetts. You can see that there are communities that have literally funded hundreds of projects because they took advantage of this program from practically the day that it was offered to them. And I would just finally note, for the body, there's 140 of us here tonight. We're hoping to be here for just about three hours. And our only vote tonight is to agree that this is headed to the ballot, where more people can have the chance to have a voice in it. So I hope everyone would agree that whether or not you're quite there yet, whether or not you think you need to do a little bit more research on your own, totally understandable, that at the end of the day, we're really just standing here as a body, saying we think this has merit enough to go to a ballot.
Melissa Danza, Cameron Drive. I'm also on Conservation Commission, Chair of the Open Space Committee, and was part of the Master Plan Committee most recently. The number one feedback that we've gotten is trying to preserve our rural character of Rutland. This is one of our top recommendations on a lot of our plans. This hits so many boxes, so many opportunities that we can, we can accomplish. And updating our open space and rec plan, you know, it's very evident that we have such a gap of things that we need to improve upon. We have so many great resources. This is such a great mechanism. I also work in a community or for a community that has CPA. I can see when it's done, and us as a body gets to decide which projects, you know, we want to place forward. It has a vetting process, so I would definitely support this initiative. Thank you.
Karine Puliafico, 11 Sunnyside. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that somebody commented that a town had trouble getting out of it. We can get out of it after three years, right?
If, if we, if we wanted to, if we voted in a 3%... Can you hear me? Okay. If we, whatever percentage, if the town were to pass, whatever percentage, it could be changed at any time, as long as it comes back to town meeting and is adjusted, again, based on whatever warrant article is recommended. If the town were to decide to no longer participate in the program completely, it once it's voted in, it has to stay in place for five years, and then it can be repealed after that. But I will note, I think there's 196 communities in the state that have adopted CPA, and not one of them has repealed it since they've, since it's...
So we can get a good, a good feel of how we're going to do after a couple of years, and then if it's not doing good, we can go down to 1%? And then after five years, we can get out altogether? So, I don't know. Seems like a good deal to me.
I just, Pat Lettino Martin, Sunnyside Ave. I just want to say that this was not sprung on the town tonight. I had, there were two presentations that I know of. One was at the Senior Center, and one was at, okay, the library. So, and both were advertised.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion?
Yes.
Harry Sackman, 13 Beachwood Drive. I'm not up here as a selectman tonight. I'm up here as a citizen because I believe in CPA. But the problem I have is, they always say there's never a right time to do it. Well, there isn't. With the process we have put in place in this town, we should be able to work at getting our budget squared away. We shouldn't have to be dealing with $1.3 million deficits. We shouldn't have to be dealing with $85 sewer charges, plus whatever else.
Speak to the mic, please.
Sorry. Okay. There we go. You shouldn't have to be dealing with that. So if you look at next year, we're going to be $1.3 million over budget. Year after that, and it's in your packet, you can take a look at it. So my question is, I had a gentleman stand up here and ask about the $40. We had somebody stand up and ask about the taxes, two and a half. Well, I can guarantee you, and this is not going to be any question of whether it's going to happen or not. If we take a half a million dollars more of your taxes, that, we're going to have to come back with this kind of a budget with a two and a half, a couple of years from now, maybe, but it's going to come back. So it all comes down to, sounds great, super presentation, I give Jen credit, she did a great job, but it all comes down... But it all comes down to whether you want your tax money right now to go to something like this. If you look at the state revenue from real estate transactions, for the last three years, they've been decreasing. 22, 23, 24, and state projections, not mine, they're due to reduce again. So how much money are we going to get? You know, there are 60% of the towns or cities in this state that don't do 3%. They do less than 3%. And they still get that big first round. They may not get the 5% in the second round or that 2.5% in the third round, but they get the money on the first one. So we don't have to be at 3%. That's what has been proposed by the board. So it's all about, if you're willing to put that money out, pay that extra check, and then know that we're going to be in trouble and you're facing something else down the road, then that's fine. Like I said, I am not against CPA. I'm against doing it right now. And if doing it right now, I would recommend 1%. At least get it started.
Natalie Borison, Brunel Drive. I'd just like to point out that with 1%, the maximum state match is 30%. With 2%, the maximum state match is, I believe, either 39 or 41%. With the 3%, it's 100% match. So there is a massive difference in how much the town would be able to accumulate.
Lynn Amstons, 7 Breezy Lane. My sainted mother would say it's about time. It's about time. Housing, affordable housing, historical preservation in this town, it's needed, it's needed now. Stop wasting our time discussing, we needed it 30 years ago. We needed it forever, so let's go. Let's get this done.
Peter Pacer of 20 Highland Park Road. I'm not always, I'm generally not a big fan of overrides and tax increases, but I'm looking at this and I'm having memories of the Davis Farm, for example. There was a right of first refusal. The town could buy it, preserve it. We didn't have the money. It got developed. There were several other properties of that time, from that time on and before. So I've heard, I heard somebody mention about, this town is turning into Shrewsbury. This town is turning into Holden. I would submit that the lack of funds, the lack of funds to be able to preserve these parcels might be one of the reasons why. As far as historical, I'm on the Historical Commission as a chair. I'm not speaking on behalf of the commission by any stretch of the imagination, but I just can say from my experience, the roof of the wood house needed repair. As I recall, there was, we had special legislation from Ann Goby to take care of that. There's another thing that CPA, I believe, would have helped us with. We just happened to, we just happened to hit it. We had, we were able to get some help on that. I would concur with those who've been speaking in favor. Thank you.
Karen Sotterberg, 3 Ridge Road. I just wanted to remind people that there were many things on this budget today that would have been covered by that money. I know it was mentioned earlier, but I just wanted to bring that back up. Thank you.
Mike Dvarekis, 5 Stevens Way. Just a couple of things on the 3%. He is right, tax revenues are down, which is precisely why we shouldn't match the state and get the maximum amount that we possibly can. And the 3%, it gives three payments a year. And you're right, we are facing a lot of things in the next couple of years. There is no doubt about it. I've read the numbers, too. We need to maximize what we can get. It's necessary. And the second part of that is, there is exemptions. So it doesn't mean that everybody is going to be paying an absorbable amount of extra money. It is feasible, I'm on social security. Depending what my property values are and my income, I may be paying next to nothing. So it is a lot and it depends on the person's situations and where the people are. So there's a lot of variances as to what could be, what the exemptions are. One person could be paying nothing, another one could be paying five or 10, maybe somebody is paying 200. So it does vary. But I think we should maximize whatever we can from the state. And I think going forward, the time is now. Let's get this done tonight. Let's get it done in November and let's move forward with a good, strong committee. And all I can say is if this passes tonight, please, let's get strong on getting this out to the public for November. Thank you very much.
Laurie Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. I just had a question. If we amended this and went with 1%, you mentioned if we went with the 3%, it would take, if we changed our minds, about five years to get out. Is it the same with the 1% if we start with that?
Want to answer that, Jen?
I think through you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the state act allows a town that has adopted the CPA to adjust the surcharge if it goes with, if it starts at 3, to adjust down to 1 at any subsequent town meeting after it's been adopted. The statute provides that there is a five-year period before an adopted CPA can then be repealed by a town meeting. So the adjustment of the surcharge is at any future town meeting after the act is adopted tonight and then if it's adopted at the ballot in November.
Sir? Sir? You've been up here several times-
I know. Let's call the question.
...people around me. If you have one word of criticism for these people, you're out of the room. Go ahead and speak.
Call the question. Let's vote it down.
Did anybody second his motion?
Second.
Who seconded it?
I can't, those who-
The motion has been made and seconded to call the question, to move the question.
Mr. Moderator, through you. If there's no one else prepared to speak, you can just go to the vote on the main motion.
I've been advised that we don't, we can, as long as nobody else wants to speak, we can, we can proceed to the motion. So you've heard the motion, you've heard the presentation, and you've heard discussion. The motion is before you. The, Ben, go ahead and open up the vote. Let's proceed to vote. The poll is open.
Can you clarify the vote?
This is the vote on the article. This is a vote on the article, not on proceeding to vote. You understand that? I thought you did, Louis. Has everybody bailed to their wish? We'll close the vote. There are 73 yeses, 33 nos. The vote has passed. We'll move on to Article 28. To see if the town will vote to change the zoning of the parcel described in the deed recorded in the Worcester District Registry of Deeds Book 69564, page 123, also known as Assessors Map 37 Parcel A26, from the Residence District to the Town Center District, TC-2, or take any action thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 28 and amend the town of Rutland zoning bylaw and the town of Rutland zoning maps as referenced in Article 1, Section 1 of the zoning bylaw to rezone the property identified on the town Assessors Map 37 as Parcel A26 from the Residence-60 District, R-60, to the Town Center-2 Sub-District, TC-2.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee took no action on this because it's a citizen's petition.
No action from the Finance Committee. The Planning Board, do they have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 28.
Norman, what did you say?
Favorable.
Favorable.
Two questions. Joe Becker, Crestview Drive.
What?
I just said so. I just said it.
Louis? Louis? Be quiet.
Joe Becker, 18 Crestview Drive, Mr. Kanakioli.
Just two questions. One is a, is a question of clarification because I do see that it's a citizen's participation and I'm just curious why the Board of Selectmen moved the question for that reason. And then the second question I have is exactly what this is doing.
Can anybody answer the questions?
I'm happy to try, Mr. Moderator. A citizen's petition under state law is just to get an article onto the warrant. Once it's on the warrant, it's treated as any other article and the select board can make the main motion if they choose. The second question, what is this doing? It is changing the zoning district of this parcel.
Why don't we let Joe finish? Go ahead.
So, and I'm just, this is just a curiosity question. In the past, citizens' petitions were not run by town council unless or until or unless it was approved by the meeting and at which point it went through council. So was this citizen's petition an exception to that or has that changed? And what parcel are we talking about? I don't know it by the number.
Roger, correct me if I'm wrong. The citizen's petitions were not run through town council, they're placed on the warrant because this and the next question or zoning question, Planning Board did look at them and with the town planner. And the other question, I think, was the parcel itself. I believe it's the parcel south after Countryside Estates on Maple Ave, on the same side of the road. Planning Board, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're heading Maple Ave south towards Paxton after Countryside, it's the next, I believe it's the next property on the same side as Countryside, I believe.
Ludwig Haber, 1 Olivia. My question is, who brought the petition and for what purpose? What does the reclassification do?
Someone on the Planning Board want to answer that?
The petitioner was Mark Elbag and he's the only one that we could answer what his plans would be for that property.
Mr. Elbag.
How you doing tonight?
Introduce yourself.
Mark Elbag, 188 Glenwood Road. We brought the petition forward. This is to extend the zoning district. It's either Town Center 2, it's Town Center 1, Town Center 2, and then commercial from the center of town all the way south. This extends that zoning one parcel further.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Natalie Borison, 15 Brunel. I would just like, I would just like clarification on the purpose that wasn't answered, so.
The purpose? So, Mark, why do you want to change it? That's the question.
It opens up different possibilities for the parcel. It takes it from, it takes it from a residential zoning district, which would be a single-family or two-family house, and it opens it up to Town Center 2, which could further be a mixed use or more affordable housing. It's right next to Countryside Estates. We think it's a good fit and it, I think, overall would benefit the town.
Other discussion?
Barbara Rushala, Maple Ave. My understanding that the Town Center District is somewhere in the vicinity of Main Street, Maple Ave, Palm Gussit, in the, in the center of town, where the fire station is, the town hall, et cetera. So we're extending the Town Center all the way down Maple Ave? Or we're taking and making a new spot zoning out there at the, towards the end of Maple Is my question.
No, it's extending the zoning one parcel to the south. Everything north of that, from Countryside Estates all the way to the center of town is either Town Center 1, Town Center 2, or commercial business.
Okay, so I could be wrong, but to me, that spot zoning, we, I can remember many years in the past, somebody would want something over here and something over there. That just to me is spot zoning. We have a Town Center District. I don't understand why we need to extend that to a spot way out in Maple Ave. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, sit down for a second. The town planner, can you, can you speak to this, please?
John Chabeno, Town Planner. I'm not speaking in favor or against this article because it's a citizen's petition. However, the parcel directly to the north is Countryside Estates. It is technically its own business. However, an apartment complex or condo complex like that is normally not zoned business. So there was discussion at the public hearing that the Planning Board had of potentially looking at the possibility of rezoning that parcel to be part of the Town Center District because really it being business-owned is miszoned. So if you look at it from that perspective, this is connected to the zoning district that exists right now. So I defer to county council, but I don't believe this qualifies as spot zoning in that regard.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Without having done a detailed analysis of, if this parcel is adjacent to the district that is being proposed to be converted to, it's unlikely that would be considered spot
Jean Sigliano, 27 Soucy Drive. To expect us to vote on this without a map to see anything, I don't know what we're talking about. I'd like to see a map that shows the zoning and what this zone is proposing to be. It should be up on the screen.
Mark, I didn't mean to stop you. I just wanted the planner to go first. If you wish to speak or bring the map up.
I have a map that I would like to see.
Go ahead, explain your map, Mark.
So it's, it's very small and very hard to see, but this is Maple Ave, this is Kenwood, and this is that TC-2 zoning, TC-2 zoning, Countryside Estates, and it's the parcel directly to the south.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
So that's Maple Ave there, it's Kenwood to the north, and this parcel is directly to the south of the pink parcel.
If I may, just to orient yourself, the pink is Countryside Estates.
I believe I heard a voice, but nobody identified themselves. The map is here. The pink is the countryside and just below it is the property. Thank you, Ben. Is there any discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Let's open the vote. The vote is open. Yeses allow, nos do not. This will be a 2/3 majority vote. I think a few people have left. The count's not going up too fast. Has everybody voted their wish? We can close the vote. We can close the vote. Roger, I don't think that passed. The vote failed. It is not a 2/3 vote. It's 58 yeses and 46 nos. The vote failed. Moving on to Article 29, to see if the town will vote to include the parcel on Intervale Road described in the deed recorded in the Worcester County Registry of Deeds book 12384, page 217, also known as Assessors Map 22 Parcel A7 into the Light Industrial Office District or take any action in relation thereto. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 29 and amend the Town of Rutland zoning bylaw and the Town of Rutland zoning map as referenced in Article 1, Section 1 of the zoning bylaw to rezone the property identified on the Town Assessors Map 22 as Parcel A7 from the Residence 60 District, R60, to the Light Industrial Office District, LI slash O.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
Finance Committee recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee took no action on this due to it being a citizen's petition.
Thank you. Planning Board recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Planning Board recommends favorable action on Article 29.
Will the town planner care to speak? Standing right there.
Thank you. John Charbonneau, Town Planner. This situation is different from the previous article in that this parcel was voted to be rezoned to what it's being proposed to be rezoned to tonight back in 1992. However, the information was never ratified by the Attorney General, so that's why this article's before the town tonight to basically revote on something that was previously approved over 30 years ago. And as you can see from the map, what it's being rezoned to, it's sandwiched in between two zones that are already zoned similarly. So this would actually make this zoning district contiguous for the three parcels.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Michelle Van Reet. Is the zoning that we have now, though, different from the zoning we had in 1992? Didn't we do the Town Center and all of that after 1992?
John Charbonneau, Town Planner. This is not Town Center zoning. This is Light Industrial slash Office zoning. And yes, it was zoned the same thing in 1992. This existed prior to that.
Has it actually changed since 1992?
No. This was supposed to be zoned this way in 1992. This is not Town Center. This is a zoning district that existed back then.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please use your, use your remotes. Again, this will be a 2/3 majority vote. Have all voted their wish? I declare the ballot closed. Yeses 86, nos 20. That looks like it's a 2/3 majority. The vote passes. Thank you. We're into the home stretch. At this point in time, I would like to appoint to the Finance Committee Thomas Rushala, Alex Morat, and Lynn Winneker for three-year terms in the Finance Committee. Is there any other business that should come before the meeting? Hearing no other business, I want to thank especially Aria Monaco and Steve Angus for participating in the opening. I want to thank the boards on both sides for a great night. They've all done very nice work. Austin has something to say?
I just want to thank everyone for coming. First and foremost, the very last page of the public information packet has a volunteer application form. We have several openings on boards and commissions. If you're interested, please fill out the form or you can file it online. And also, I just want to give an extreme heartfelt thank you to Tamika Murphy, who works in my office and the Select Board office for all of her work preparing the warrant. This public information packet, without her, this information related to you tonight wouldn't have been presented, so I just want to thank her for her work.
And most of all, I want to thank the townspeople for coming tonight and enjoying a great meeting. We appreciate it. Good night. Mr. Moderator? You need a motion? Motion to adjourn. I got it.